All right, good evening, everybody. It is six o'clock, and I'll call the twenty-third regular common council meeting to order. Will the clerk state the quote of the evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's amazing what you can accomplish if you don't care who gets the credit.
Thank you. Will the clerk call the roll?
Alder Person Bellinger.
Here.
Alder Person Decker.
Here.
Alder Person Feldy.
Excused.
Alder Person Heidemann.
Here.
Alder Person LaFave.
Here.
Alder Person Mitchell.
Here.
Alder Person Perella.
Here.
Alder Person Peterson.
Here.
Alder Person Ramey.
Here.
Alder Person Rust.
Rust.
There are nine present.
Thank you. If folks could please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Alder Decker, do you have a motion to approve the minutes from our previous meeting?
Just thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes from the twenty-second regular council meeting held on February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of approval of the minutes, please state aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Minutes are approved. Next, city clerk. Anyone for public forum this evening?
Yes. We'll start with Mike Scharinger.
Good evening. If you could please state your name, address, and then you'll have, then the topic you wish to speak on, and then you'll have five minutes.
Right. Thank you for the opportunity tonight. My name is Mike Scharinger. I reside at thirty-twenty Cherokee Drive. I'm here tonight to speak about the proposal to expand mountain biking infrastructure within the boundaries of Evergreen Park. I'm not aware of how long the members of the council have been serving in their capacity, or how active you may have been in city politics prior to this term. I do know, however, as a lifelong Sheboygan resident, that nothing seems to galvanize Sheboygan voters like parks and park-related initiatives. Examples in our not-too-distant past include Sheridan Park and Field of Dreams. Speaking as a member of the Friends of Evergreen, I want to be clear that our ask is that the full council vote no on this resolution. At a minimum, we would ask that you delay action until after the April election, when wards one and two will have new representation on the council, as we think it's only fair that new representation have the chance to vote for or against this proposal, which many find controversial. I've received input from members of our elected bodies that seem to temper their concerns with the proposal, saying things like, "A vote tonight does not necessarily approve," or "Permits and reviews will still be required," or "We can just consider phase two of the four-phase SCC concept plan." The problem with these moderating themes are, one, this is not what the resolution says; two, this is not what is included in the SCC concept plan; and, three, the belief that the very premise upon which the proposal is based is false, namely, the reference to established or designated trails. The reality is that what is present in Evergreen Park today is a series of informally established trails that crisscross sensitive areas, including wetlands and the interior loop road, and areas along the southwest section of the park, that because of their topography and soil type are highly susceptible to erosion, with these same areas terminating in wetlands that border the river. The concept plan seeks to locate advanced skills-training areas in close proximity to neighborhoods to the south of the park, seeks to expand trails that currently encroach on wetlands, and in some cases come close to homes that border the park, and add an asphalt skills area that will increase runoff and encroach upon the reservable areas of the park. These elements, and the extent to which the SCC proposal seeks to locate them throughout the entirety of the park, will change the current makeup and use of the park. SCC has done an amazing job putting together a mountain biking park proposal. The problem is, it's in the wrong location. A location that is in need of protection, not development. We are asking you tonight to be cognizant of all users of the park. Mountain bikers love this proposal. Walkers and hikers, not so much. Bird watchers and nature lovers, not really. Trail runners and joggers, many can cite examples of conflict with this activity. Dog walkers, definitely not. And families, many of them Hmong and Hispanic, who use the reservable areas throughout the summer, well, they don't want to be told in the future that certain weekends are off limit because Evergreen Park is now a mountain biking destination as the SCC proposal envisions. And then, there's one more group: taxpayers, who are never going to believe that 1.5 million of infrastructure is not going to create financial obligations down the road. Evergreen Park, formerly known as Pine Woods, only exists today because of a series of private owners who were intentional about preserving its natural beauty. Research the park's history, and you will find stories dating back to eighteen-thirty referencing people like John Foster being protective of the old-growth trees and habitat. Since nineteen-eighteen, the park has been in city hands, serving as an equal-access recreational area while respecting and continuing the preservation efforts of its early owners. We ask that your actions tonight continue this legacy. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk?
Jed Baumann?
Sure. You can whichever, whatever one you want. Jed, if you could please state your name, address, and then the item you're addressing, and then you will have five minutes.
Baumann, seven-zero-four North Fifteenth Street, Sheboygan. The business tonight that I would like to address would be the Evergreen Park Trails Concept Plan. I am in full favor of this plan, and I ask that the council also vote in favor of the concept plan. It is, again, an initial concept for the park. There will be many plans and bid and build documents that will have to be reviewed as the process continues. I understand that Alder Person Feld will not be able to give her representation for this committee on the project, so I respect that if we need representation for that district, then I accept that as the result of this evening's meeting. The reason I want to see these trails in Sheboygan is because I want to see Sheboygan thrive as a community. I believe that these trails, in a new, modernized, more ecologically friendly, and well-maintained with lessened user conflict, will benefit all of the users of the park better than the trails that currently exist today. The trails that were put in, again, as was stated earlier, are a lot of social lines that were created without an eye or concern towards what kind of ecological impact those trails would have. Professional trail builders know how to address ecological issues, and their main focus is creating a positive user experience, which means they are always taking into account all trail users, not just people on mountain bikes, and these will always remain shared-use trails within the park. So nobody is attempting to take anything away from anybody else. Hopefully, we make everybody's experience better. With our world becoming more and more digital, it's important that we have more opportunities outdoors for people to recreate away from screens, or at least balance their lives so that they don't have so many screens in front of their faces all the time, where they can decompress with their families and enjoy the outdoors and commune with nature. As, again, we become more digital, employees or people that work online are increasingly able to choose where they want to live. They don't need to go where an employer might hire them. So Sheboygan needs everything available to it as an asset to help draw in the talent that exists all over the world that may well choose Sheboygan to be the place where they decide to call home. Again, I hope you all choose to vote in favor of the concept plan, and we definitely look forward to working with all of you very soon in the details involved in making this a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk?
Scott Hollowell.
Scott, if you could say your name, address, and the item you'd wish to speak on, and then you'll have five minutes.
I'm Scott Hollowell. My address is three-five-one-two Eisner, and I'm speaking on Parks, Evergreen Park. I'm talking about here. I just want to talk on, as someone who uses the park regularly, I have a, I live relatively close to it. We have, I have an eight-year-old daughter who, you know, I try to convince to be here tonight, but, you know, she couldn't, she couldn't, she didn't buy that this is going to be a fun time. And as we, you know, we use the trails in a multi-use fashion. We walk through them, we bike through them. It's, her grandparents live on the other side of the park, but use it to get from one place to another. We use it to get to McDonald's, you know, just to go have a nice night. And, you know, even, even in her age, she has a courage song for part of the trails because it is, it is rather, it is rather, you need a courage song for some parts of the trails for biking. There's root issues, and some of these, like, these are beneficial to everybody, that we cover just basic walking along the trails, like, you know, we're talking about, we're talking about tripping on roots, you know, and that's, that is, that is an issue that we can all, like, let's go, it helps everybody, there's no for or against it. We don't want to trip on roots as we walk through the woods. And I guess there's not a ton else I need to say.
Thank you. City clerk?
Jim Van Akeren.
Good evening. My name is Jim Van Akeren. I live at four-thirty-two Lincoln Avenue in Sheboygan. I'm the chairperson of the Property Stewardship Committee at Maywood. I speak regarding item thirty-five on your agenda. While the resolution before you limits the Evergreen Park Trail Assessment and Trail Improvement Concept Plan to Evergreen Park, within the plan itself, you will find references to bike trails in Maywood Park. These are illegal bike trails. The City Ordinance forty- forty-six prohibits the use of bikes on these trails. I recognize that bikes have used the Maywood trails for years, but I can tell you, as one of the volunteers at Maywood, who has spent many hours on trail improvement crews, that bikes have a detrimental effect on the park. I won't detail every instance where bike usage at Maywood is referenced in the plan, but I have identified at least ten different occasions that it is. If you adopt today's resolution, I believe that Sheboygan County Cycling and the Department of Public Works should amend their plan to exclude the references to Maywood. I recognize that many of you are familiar with both Maywood Park and Elwood H. May Environmental Park Association of Sheboygan County, which supports the park. Some of you have volunteered at Maywood, participated in our programs, served on our advisory board. We thank you. The Elwood H. H. May Environmental Park Association of Sheboygan County Incorporated was founded in nineteen-eighty-three to support the mission of Maywood. We are the Friends Group of Maywood Park. Our group has a thirty-five-member advisory board made up of individuals from a wide variety of backgrounds, including engineers, retirees, lawyers, dentists, CEOs, state representatives, teachers, and what I like to call professional volunteers, the people who out of the generosity of their heart make this a better community. Our volunteers range in age from preschoolers who pick up trash to ninety-year-olds who offer their wisdom and insight. The work they all do is precious to us. Many community organizations have representatives on our advisory board, including scouting organizations, rotary clubs, Kiwanis Clubs, the local garden clubs, public and private schools, the JCs, local universities, and the Sheboygan County Conservation Association. The advisory board met in July of last year to discuss the impact of bicycles in Maywood Park. Citing a variety of reasons that are detrimental to the park, the advisory board, without dissent, recommended that bicycles not be allowed on unpaved areas in Maywood. The association at Maywood has an executive committee which makes the final decisions about the association's positions. The executive committee passed a resolution last August stating that the association desires no park, no bikes allowed in Maywood except on paved lots, driveways, blacktop, and hardscape. Over the years, the association has contributed hundreds of thousands of volunteer hours and millions of dollars to make Maywood Park the gem it is today. The association has provided environmental education opportunities for all ages, enhanced recreational areas for walking, hiking, birding, wildlife viewing, cross-country skiing, and snowshoeing, improved and maintained the park grounds and trails, and created features such as interpretive signs, overlooks, and we are currently in the planning stations, stages of creating a new or modified sugar shack. The association raises the money and built the Ecology Center at the park, and we continue to provide money to modify the buildings and grounds. Working with the city, we provide money to hire staff, including most recently custodial staff to care for the inside of the building, which belongs to the city. We connect our community to the natural world and inspire people to care for our environment, both locally and globally. An example of an association activity that we are currently working on is a Boy Scout is working on his Eagle Project. He, along with others in his troop, are building boot brushes. These are designed to hinder the spread of seeds of non-native plants into Maywood. The boot brushes will be placed at the entryways to trails at Maywood. It is contradictory to the goal of this project to allow bicycles, which carry non-native seeds, in their tires into Maywood Park. My point is, we have a successful and economical environmental park because of the association. We are very protective of our investment. I personally have environmental and other concerns about the plan's ideas for Evergreen Park. The thought is to create a bicycle playground in a beginner, intermediate skill zone. This will obviously attract children. However, with two very busy roads flanking the park, there's no safe way.
Can you wrap it up?
Yep, for the children to get to the park on their own. If you persist in having these areas in Evergreen Park, safe road crossings need to be constructed, otherwise exploration of another park location should be done, which leads me to complete streets. We need a policy. It's fifteen months.
And we're working.
Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk?
Good evening. I'm Robert Lyons. I live at twenty-seven forty-six North Twenty-seventh Street. I'm here to discuss the resolution in regards to the Sheboygan County Cycling Club, along with Amblus' proposed modification of Evergreen Park to create a cycling complex within the existing Evergreen Park footprint. I am adamantly against this proposal for the following reasons and costs. The project costs for all four phases currently is estimated at 1.65 million dollars with a variation of plus or minus twenty percent. The high cost of construction is not the concerning issue, as the, this should be funded by grants and donations according to their website. The future maintenance is a concern I have. As page twenty of the Sheboygan County Cycling Assessment Package estimates, annual maintenance for traditional optimized bike trails is between five and fifteen percent for a total cost production. Bearing that in mind, ten percent would equate to 165,000 dollars a year annually. I do understand that the cycling club did contribute 200 to 300 hours of stewardship work in 2024, with an estimated value of between eight and 12,000 dollars at forty dollars per hour. I commend their efforts and their volunteer hours, as this will reduce the maintenance costs. Unfortunately, even with their efforts, there is 150,000 dollar a year shortfall annually. Scope and size. The size and scope of the project for roughly ninety-acre park far exceeds the capacity of the shared-use park. The park is a shared-use space for picnicking, bicycling, general recreation, hiking, skiing, softball, sledding, volleyball, and most recently, mountain biking and dog walking. As the vast list of activities show, there are many, many purposes for this park, and not too exclusively mountain biking as the proposal would create. You can clearly see from the Evergreen Park Concept Planning Map that all four phases of this concept would encompass approximately sixty percent of the park for one limited group, creating unnatural trails with elevated planks, carved-out trails with high banking, large jumps, and yes, asphalt. Please keep in mind, this is Evergreen Park, a space for all of us to use. The park. Unfortunately, the park has had some serious times in the past decade, with funding, maintenance shortages, leading to issues the public has serious concerns with. Currently, the park's maintenance consists of lawn care, snow removal on roadways, cleanup in designated picnic areas, bathroom maintenance, and trash removal. There has been almost no effort for tree maintenance, invasive species removal, brush or branch removal in the wooded areas. As you may remember, the city suffered from a serious straight-line wind event June of 2022. To this day, the park has only removed damaged trees, limbs, and rubbish in roadways, picnic areas, and other spaces. A true restoration of the park has not been completed, leading to public concerns with at least a thousand-plus dead limbs, branches, and dead trees, some widowmakers. This, along with the unkept underbrush and dry summer conditions we have been experiencing, should raise a red flag as an alarming fire concern. I feel the park has not taken the initiative to assist from forestry removal services, keep what you take, community businesses, pay it forward days, volunteer organizations, or the public assistance. Many of the residents I spoke to love to assist for maintenance of the park's and its grounds. They have been discouraged and told they cannot assist due to the liability issues the Parks Department has. In my opinion, I feel the Parks Department, positively for this proposal, positively for this proposal to move forward, is an attempt for them to remove the burden of maintaining and bringing the park back to what it once was after years of neglect. In closing, I have had the opportunity to travel to forty-nine of the fifty states and to some of the most beautiful sights in America. Upon my return, I still cannot wait to go for a walk through Evergreen, Maywood, and the quarry, even in its current condition, to experience its beauty with rivers, ponds, meadows, and coarse, and of course, evergreens. This, along with the abundant nature of deer, waterfall, small game, great, and barred owls, piliated woodpuckers, bald eagles, hummingbirds, butterflies, and the endangered rusty-patched bumblebee. These are just a few, as the list could go on and on. I ask that the members of the common council take a morning or an evening hike through these areas to experience one of Sheboygan's true gems for themselves before making a decision that is irreversible. Thank you for your time and your consideration. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And that concludes our public forum for this, this evening, and we'll continue the conversation for item thirty-five later on in the agenda. First presentation for the evening, we have the Mayor's International Committee presentation as well, so another committee update, and I'll call on the chair, Annie Kinklose, who will give an overview of what the MIC has been up to. And before we start, we have a few MIC members in the audience. If you could just give a wave. All right, thank you. All right, Annie, take it away.
All right. Thank you very much. Good evening, honorable members of the common council, esteemed colleagues, and valued Sheboyganites. It is a privilege to stand before you today as chair of the Mayor's International Committee. The Mayor's International Committee comprises of seventeen dedicated community members who serve as official ambassadors of the city of Sheboygan and passionately represent Sheboygan in the broader scope of international relations. Our legacy is one of fostering understanding, cultivating relationships, and ensuring Sheboygan remains a city engaged with the world. I am pleased to share with you highlights of our committee's recent accomplishments. Our team has grown exponentially in terms of our activity and output for what I believe has become the most productive group that this committee has ever seen in its history. That said, managing exponential growth is not easy, so along with our highlights, I will share some of the ways we have found success in building our capacity in organizationally sustainable ways. Over the last few years, and particularly the last year, we have made significant strides in several key areas. One, community events, including fundraisers. Two, vastly improving our capacity for hosting international delegations. Three, growing our collaborative relationships across the community. And four, several new tools that we've enacted recently to improve our operations. So starting with the more boring stuff, on the latter note of operational improvements, we have recently updated our Mayor's International Committee Guidebook, including our mission, our vision, our membership and roles, and outlining current and ongoing initiatives, as well as aspirations that we have for years to come, and how we work as a team, including tools for Mayor's International Committee members to use, such as details about our budget process. So I'd like to read a few excerpts to give you all a little bit more background on what our committee is all about. So from the vision and mission section from our new guidebook, and I do believe this is an accurate representation as well. The Mayor's International Committee envisions a world where our community stands as a vibrant crossroads, a place where global cultures converge, collaboration fuels growth, and a unified brighter future emerges. Guided by our commitment to global understanding, the Mayor's International Committee champions a city where cultural exchanges are encouraged, where international partnerships thrive, and where ethical leadership shapes our actions. Our mission is to bridge cultural divides and strengthen our global ties, ensuring that our initiatives both resonate on the international stage and also benefit our local community directly. Through educational outreach, we aim to elevate global awareness, empowering residents to actively contribute to and benefit from a harmoniously interconnected world. So the team guidelines that we put together for, will help how Mayor's International Committee members can bring up new ideas and ways that we can enact those great ideas more effectively as a team. Our updated budget process is another component here, aiming to provide a clearer framework for ourselves to more systematically stay updated on our budgets. We have also built a system for Mayor's International Committee members to request budget amounts to be spent on particular needs. These frameworks serve as tools to empower our Mayor's International Committee members to bring their ideas to fruition and enable them to do so more effectively. And along those lines, I could speak for many hours about all the ideas that have, we have been able to bring to fruition. There are a few key activities and events. Esslingen Fest. So Esslingen Fest continues to serve as our committee's cornerstone fundraising event held annually and honoring our first sister city of Esslingen, Germany. We have been grateful to Three Cheaps Brewery for supporting us and are continuing to hold Esslingen Fest in their taproom. Our 2024 edition involved a new special partnership with Blue Harbor Resort as well, enhancing broader reach by partnering across our community for a weekend-long set of Oktoberfest-themed events. Our fundraising efforts have not only met our monetary goals for this event, but have often succeeded them in recent years. Secondly, Journey to Japan. So last fall, in fall of 2024, we held our inaugural large fundraising event themed to honor our sister city of Soubame, Japan. We are grateful to Christopher Farm &amp; Gardens for supporting us, and very differently than Esslingen Fest, was laid out as an exploratory experience with a multitude of activities, including learning origami, seeing how your name is written in Japanese calligraphy, martial arts, dance, musical and archery demonstrations, and culinary tea and snack tastings. Our Mayor's International Committee members took the lead in bringing together a multitude of organizations across Sheboygan, even across Wisconsin, and from several other states across the United States to bring this vibrant idea to life. Fundraising from Journey to Japan exceeded expectations as well. In addition to those kind of our large cornerstone events that we've held, we also have several other events that I'd like to highlight a little bit. So throughout 2024, our team has led several additional events to contribute cultural understanding and empathy to the Sheboygan community also. These have included Taste of Japan, held in late 2024, involving a live cooking show and sort of mini-Japanese cultural fair at Uptown Social; a community movie night held in the spring of 2024, welcoming families to learn about our sister cities and experience a vetted global film for children and others; and an impressive display at Mead Public Library earlier in the year in 2024, showcasing significant milestones in Sheboygan's sister-city relationships throughout the eons. Additionally, our team has led pro- Additionally, our team has led programs fostering active exchanges with our two sister cities. Coffee Talks has been active since, I believe, 2021. This began as a conversational English-language program through virtual Zoom meetings with folks in Esslingen, Germany, first connecting firefighters and first responders, and blossoming into one-on-one connections between city professionals in several disciplines to share ideas and best practices. I will also mention, I did not include in my notes, but we are also looking to expand that program actually to Subame as well, potentially. So there's a lot of, it's been well-regarded. We also have held school communications exchanges for the last maybe couple of years or so, connecting classes in Sheboygan Elementary Schools with our sister-city communities. This has involved mailing student artwork and sharing videos of cultural everyday experiences, such as what lunchtime looks like. Having thrived as a program with Subame, we are now at the cusp of expanding this idea to collaborate in a similar way with Esslingen. Next, I want to speak a bit about delegation hosting. So most recently, our team has been making great strides to strengthen our capacity as a community to host global delegations from our sister cities. Hosting a group takes a great deal of care to organize well, and our team has been stepping up immensely to ensure that we're set up to demonstrate our warm hospitality when our friends abroad visit. As far as Esslingen goes, in summer 2023, we hosted a group of over twenty delegates from Esslingen, consisting of their mayor, several Esslingen city partners, plus a group of firefighters. In-person connections fostered during these such delegations grow seeds for significant global friendships over time. As far as Subame goes, in the summer of 2024, we hosted a group of seven delegates from Subame following a thirteen-year unintended hiatus from our in-person exchanges with them. We hosted three Subame city officials and four Subame students, including activities such as planting a host of trees across the street from Peace Park. Looking ahead to the upcoming future in summer 2025, we are planning to host our next delegation from Subame. And our team is very hard at work in making sure this is shaped to be the best experience possible. Recognizing some of the capacity challenges that we faced in hosting delegations in recent years, our team has geared our efforts to focus on building stronger ties with our community. This enhances our guest experience while strengthening ties in more directions across Sheboygan as well. We are building our capacity as the Mayor's International Committee to serve as the convening body, empowering our community to welcome our global friends into more pockets of Sheboygan life while they're here. Across all of these events, activities, programs, and delegation hosting capacity lies a common thread that I'd like to highlight as well. We are actively growing our collaborative relationships across the Sheboygan community and far beyond. Our team has been building, growing, and strengthening relationships with numerous community groups, nonprofits, membership organizations, clubs, and businesses ranging from small to medium to large. Each conversation with a new possible collaborating individual or group further strengthens Sheboygan's global ties and community engagement. In conclusion, I extend my sincere appreciation for our fantastic, high-performing Mayor's International Committee team, as well as all of our many collaborating groups and individuals, for all of the significant effort that these accomplishments have entailed. I also extend my appreciation to our team for their patience with me, as I too have navigated how best to manage such exponentially growing activity. I invite all Common Council members, past, present, and future, to join us in welcoming this summer's sister-city delegations. We invite community members to join us as well. We'll be putting out more information about details. I'm looking forward to seeing what passport stamps of accomplishment our team will achieve moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. All right, we're just gonna do some maneuvering on the agenda. So we're gonna do Mayor's announcements first, and then we'll do the presentation with Bold Path Consulting. All right, well, if I could have, I was gonna say the Sheboygan Symphony come up, but we have quite the crew here this evening. So if any of the members of the Symphony would like to come up for a presentation, come on up. We'll squeeze in, we'll make it work. So as the group shuffles on up here, I'll just say some opening remarks. The Sheboygan Symphony is the longest-running symphony in the state of Wisconsin and has been performing music at the Stephanie H. Wild Center for over a hundred years now. And it's truly a wonderful nonprofit organization that we have that brings the community together. And as a former band kid, I always love when we're able to celebrate our community with music as well. So one of the key members of the Sheboygan Symphony who's just been an icon and a cornerstone in our community for many, many decades is Peter DeBoris, who's been a true leader in the music industry. And I have a proclamation recognizing his legacy for the city, so I'll read that proclamation here. So Peter DeBoris, a Sheboygan native of Sheboygan, Wisconsin, was born on October 31, 1947, dedicating his life to the advancement of music and performing the arts. Maestro DeBoris founded Mid-America Productions in 1983, transforming it into a four-decades-in-to-the-world-renowned institution that brings music to life on the global stage, including the prestigious Carnegie Hall. And whereas Peter DeBoris was recognized as the most prolific presenter of choral concerts in the history of Carnegie Hall and having presented over one thousand five hundred events worldwide, including operas, symphonic concerts, Greek folk music, and ballet, and has achieved the remarkable milestone of fifty podium appearances at Carnegie Hall. Whereas his remarkable vision for passion shaped Mid-America Productions and touched the lives of countless musicians and audiences alike. Whereas Peter DeBoris made his New York conducting debut on January 7, 1984, with the American Symphony Orchestra at Lincoln Center, making the beginning of the illustrating career that expanded over fifty years. So now I, Ryan Sorenson, by the virtue, as me vested as the mayor of the great city Sheboygan, do hereby proclaim March 16 as Peter DeBoris Day throughout the city of Sheboygan in encouraging all citizens to recognize and celebrate the extraordinary contributions of this remarkable Sheboygan native to the world and music and all the performing arts. I'll present the proclamation to you. Got it? All right. And now I'll turn the podium over to the Director of the Sheboygan Symphony, Wilhelmina Niles-Vorgtul, Chorus. Excuse me, Chorus. Wilhelmina Niles-Vorgtul, who came all the way from Canada, just made it here. No delays as well to share the extraordinary work that they are doing at the symphony, so.
Thank you so much, Mayor Sorenson, for this wonderful proclamation. Peter was immensely proud of his Sheboygan roots. And in fact, the concert at which this proclamation will be publicly announced, March 16, at 3:00 PM at the Wild Center. You're all invited. That concert was conceived by Peter as a thank you to Sheboygan for his start in music and as a means to assist the Sheboygan Symphony Chorus in our appearance on his concert program in Carnegie Hall on May 26, 2025, where we will have the incredible honor of singing for Sir John Rutter in his Rutter Requiem. Peter unfortunately passed away on September 17 of this year. And while it was his wish, his plan in fact, to come to Sheboygan and produce this concert, bringing with him his wife, the operatic soprano Elana Lapalanan, free of charge. This is something in the forty-one-year history of this organization, Mid-America Productions, that they have never done before, partnered with an outside organization to produce a concert. It is a measure of just how much Sheboygan means and meant to Peter. In fact, the ELT of Mid-America has chosen to honor Peter's wishes. The concert will proceed ahead at no cost to the Sheboygan Symphony Chorus and Orchestra for the conductor's appearance. They're sending us a conductor from New York City. Elana will come and literally sing through her grief as the soprano soloist, which, as a singer myself, I'm not sure how she's gonna pull that one off. It's an incredible opportunity for not only us to sing on that illustrious stage, but in fact, by doing so, we bring everything full circle. Peter started in Sheboygan. He went to Carnegie Hall. He meant to come home to conduct both the Symphony Orchestra and the Chorus here. And now we have a chance to complete the circle in New York City on May 26 of this year. So thank you so much for your recognition of Peter and his tremendous contribution to music around the world. Thank you.
Yeah, this. And at the next symphony, we will have a performance at the next council meeting. Right, Kim? All right. Thanks, everybody. All right. Next, we will have our second, third presentation from Bold Path Consulting regarding the DPW Planning Structure Review. DPW and planning. What's that?
Patrick?
Yeah.
Welcome. Good afternoon or good evening, everybody. My time of day wrong. I don't have anything as cool to announce here, so I apologize in advance for that. But we engaged, when I say we, I, you are meeting Bold Path Consulting and their entire staff, that we engaged with the city in July of last year to begin a review of the Public Works Department. And then shortly thereafter, I'd say probably a couple months later, I also agreed to provide some assistance in reviewing certain aspects of the Planning and Development Department. And so I'm gonna go through this briefly. I believe everyone has received a copy of this. And so what I wanna do primarily, instead of giving you death by PowerPoint and going through exhaustively every detail, I think you got enough on the agenda tonight, I wanna make certain that you know what you're looking at when you go through the reports. And I'll walk you through some of the high points, add some color commentary. If anyone has any questions, I'm more than happy to go through those. But I'm gonna start with the Public Works process. When we sat down, one of the things that we were keenly aware of are three things. One, that a recent leadership transition at City Hall, Casey Kelly, Caitlin, you know, you go on and down the list in terms of new faces, I say new, you know, last three, four years, trying to navigate through some of the challenges, but also had the unique opportunity with a transition at the Public Works leadership level, especially with, at the director level and city engineer. In fact, I think I got Travis week two of his time with the city. And so he was drinking water through a fire hose, quite literally trying to learn the role, learn the city, and also to go through a study that's digging into his department. And then the third facet was that we knew that there was some level of fatigue with the employees as it relates to surveys and things of that nature, a history of, let's look at something and perhaps maybe not follow through with it. And so we were very sensitive to the need to get an employee voice in this process, but without overwhelming it unnecessarily. And so what we were trying to accomplish with this is go beyond the anecdotal. You know, here's the stories we're hearing and try to get some data behind it to illustrate where improvements might need to be made. How can we improve some of the operations and move forward? And so one of the first exercises we engaged in was an employee survey. And so about halfway through the report that you received is a document titled City of Sheboygan Department of Public Works Employee Survey Summary. And it walks through, and this is the exact document that was provided to employees relating to the outcome of the survey. I believe there was twenty questions, give or take, and I think five open-ended, four or five open-ended questions where we were seeking input on various areas. And it was a one-to-six scale. And I have to say, by and large, when you look at that, aside from the first four or five questions on that list, the remaining questions were four or higher on the survey, meaning agree or somewhat agree and above. And so, big picture, the department has a good foundation on which to build. And as we will go through the survey findings and some of the other information, that the problematic areas, I think the first one was workload. You know, do we have enough staff to do the job? And the answer was, no. I mean, that was the lowest-rated one. And I'll throw some color commentary on that one in just a moment. But the other issues related to communication, transparency, and leadership. What I felt comfortable with, or what I felt where there was a glimmer of hope, really didn't let much moss grow beneath its feet with some of the recommendations. You know, as we talked about communicating policy changes and things of that nature, I recall almost midstream, public works director looking and saying, "I was going to write a memo about this, I'm just going to talk to the employees about this." And so, you know, trying to enact some of those concerns or address some of those concerns almost as soon as they came to our attention. So it was a very helpful exercise to go through, where we're making changes to things, that's a common theme between both of these studies, you're making changes to things as they come up, because there's not time to wait and let things foster into bigger problems. And some of the bigger challenges that we identified, one, I think there's a general sense that supervisory workloads were imbalanced. You know, as I had a chance to meet with each and every supervisor, manager, superintendent in the department as part of this review, it was very clear that the, you know, where one supervisor might be responsible for 25, 30 employees, others responsible for four or five, that there's an imbalance and certainly creates a disconnect when you're trying to have regular and ineffective communications. And so, we use that as one of the measuring sticks that we were trying to resolve. I would also look at this as we, the question of what role do managers and supervisors play in the department, you know, are they working on day-to-day operations, are they focusing on big picture? And again, the need with the changes that the city is facing, the need to focus on big picture matters to address those challenges, especially when the city talks about issues like growth or sustaining their infrastructure or things of that nature, we need to make certain the supervisors have adequate time to deal with those big picture items, as well as the employee-related matters, talking about employee coaching, checking in with employees, performance evaluations, and getting those things back on track. Another concern that was raised to us was the trust with their direct supervisors. Again, that was a solid basis, but the disconnection from upper-level DPW leadership was something that we needed to address. One of the biggest pieces of the project was, and one of the bigger concerns raised by employees, was that of career paths and career ladders. You know, how do we know where our jobs lead us, or how are our jobs defined? And so we spent a great deal of time putting together, I believe it's a 78-page document right now, in terms of trying to create hierarchies for each of the staff-level positions in DPW, so employees know what's expected of them at those levels, whether it be in streets, whether it be in parks, so on and so forth, including wastewater and engineering, but trying to create some sense of where the positions lie. Also knowing that in today's world, talent management and staffing are at a premium, so creating levels where if we were, if the city needed to hire somebody at a level less than what the current position calls for, that there's a lower rung on the ladder for, to provide entry-level opportunities for employees and then allowing them to grow from there. So, again, a great deal of time of writing, review, re-review, and maybe a couple other, you know, additional layers of review with those documents. But I think we're getting close to a document where, when it comes time for budget, the city can navigate that and have those conversations. Leadership training is certainly another issue as it relates to supervisory staff and making certain that the people you're placing in charge of people are getting the training and taking advantage of resources like CivMec, your insurance company, them providing leadership guidance and other matters, that they're equipped to deal with the employee issues that they're going to be faced with on day one of their jobs. And the other one, in terms of workforce development, employee engagement, relates to time constraints. You know, you ask a lot of your supervisors, and you should, and they feel that, but they also feel that they're spending a great deal of time on the day-to-day operations, which leaves very little time for the coaching and performance and talent management issues or activities that need to happen. And the third key challenge that was identified in DPW was some of the operational efficiency matters. There's some software issues that really needed to be addressed in terms of work tracking, inventory tracking, things of that nature, where there was a shared concern, and we did have some conversations in the transition with maintenance and facilities, but also as it relates to fleet management and others, other aspects of the department, a work order system would be something that would be greatly welcomed in order to track time, in order to track certain key metrics that are so important and things that we'll talk about in some of my recommendations, as it relates to being able to justify the recommendations that are coming before you as a council for additional staff, should that become necessary. Job descriptions, you know, and if my face looks familiar to some of you, it's because I worked for my, the prior company, did your last compensation study. I don't know if that's a good thing or bad thing necessarily. But one of the things that plagued us at that time was insufficient job documentation, and in some cases, ill-defined jobs, and it reared its head again. And that was one of the reasons why we went, of, I'm just going to, I fold these over on purpose, these unified leadership expectations. And so what we went through is, for the leadership roles, foreman, admin coordinator, all the way up to director, is what does it mean to be a supervisor in the Department of Public Works? What does it mean to be a foreman or crew leader in providing core expectations that would span beyond the various divisions? So there was no inconsistent expectation from division to division. And honestly, it's probably a useful exercise that could be applied, you know, across any number of departments. So, making certain that job descriptions and job expectations were clearly defined. So for us, coming forward, and some of the recommendations that have been placed before and some who are well in motion, is that, I'll probably get the actual title wrong in case you look at me and give me the right title, but the Director of Field Operations, that, you know, the, in the department, you have your wastewater plant, it's a beast unto itself, no need to carve that up, engineering as well, you know, a different type of operation, but those field forces where you have people working in your parks, in your sewer, in your sanitation, in your streets, and mechanic's garage, that making certain that the staff is coordinated and planned, and hopefully finding some opportunities for cross-training, for employee development, but looking at that and repurposing a role. And I would say that all of the recommendations that have been put in place so far have resulted in no net change in the head count in the department. That's a conversation for a different day in terms of staffing needs. But putting that Director of Field Operations in place, working on this notion of balancing the supervisory workloads, in some of our initial conversations, you know, how do we make this happen? We split apart the streets and sewer functions, sanitation and sewer streets, being separate with supervisors over the top of that, to help balance that workload. That might take some time to actually get in place as you work with the talent in the department to get them ready to serve in a supervisory capacity. You know, one of the worst things you can do is put somebody in a supervisory role that just isn't equipped to be there. So, you know, that's the big-picture plan in terms of how quickly that ends up is something that remains to be seen. And we already talked about the leadership expectations. We talked about career paths. I think training programs are such an important piece. And one of the other elements in terms of the workforce development is the administrator functions. You know, the question is, where does the administrative staff best belong? And I want to be careful that it's not a hot potato where nobody wants to deal with it, that's couldn't be further from the truth. But where does it best, does it belong under the directorship of the department director? Or in this case, we have so many of the supervisors and managers in the Field Operations Division that are doing a lot of their own customer service as supervisors and managers who are dealing directly. And that's not to say that your supervisors and managers should not be accessible to the public, they should. But they also need to be focusing on long-term, bigger-picture matters. And so I think one of your longer-term tasks is trying to figure out that distribution of the workload, and how can that administrative staff, as finances come in and try to offload some of the financial-related duties and take them on through the central finance department, how can we repurpose some of those staff to deal with some of your cemetery functions, your special event functions, as well as any number of other customer service matters that come through the department on a daily basis? We talked a lot in this process about improved communication and employee engagement. And one of the things that was apparent is that managers need to be given the time, but also the expectation, that they manage their staff, you know, through talent development, performance management, coaching feedback, all of those sorts of things that are so important to finding and ultimately keeping the employees that you have. And if we're truly going to listen to the employees in terms of their concerns and their expectations, I think this is one of those items that needs to show up. And again, giving the supervisors and managers the time to do that is such an important piece. I think another thing that's incredibly important in all of this is ensuring leadership visibility and transparency. And again, as I've worked with Travis and his team, I think that there's absolutely a commitment to making sure that that happens within the department to continue to improve their operations. So, for the lack of me beating this issue to death, I want to make certain that, kind of talk about, what does the roadmap look like in terms of timing? You know, I think 2025 is that workforce alignment and optimization, figuring out where employees fall in the respective hierarchies. I don't think that it's going to be a major shift in terms of where things are going. But at the moment, there's no recommended staffing increases. And one of the reasons is, I firmly believe that instead of putting, we think we need more employees, or we need more employees, but not being able to back it up with data, I think it's imperative that the department have the necessary tracking tools so they can communicate the precise reasons why staffing requests are coming forward. You know, and I think you look at, or compare other departments, you have, you know, say, for example, police and fire, with the computer-rated dispatch systems, you're able to query those systems to figure out the number of calls, time spent on calls, and data on top of data on top of data. You need a similar way of tracking information in public works, so you can have those requests carry more weight in front of the council. Because my gut tells me, if you were to ask me, you probably do need more staff in certain areas in the department. I couldn't tell you where because the metrics and data currently do not exist. And so it's one of the areas where I know that they're looking at expanding. 2026 is where we see the data-driven budget and staffing decisions. And so again, you know, the expectation is, if some of these things take hold, that there will be requests. But again, with the insight that the data can provide in terms of what actually stands behind these. So I look at this as it was a good investment in time, you know, with a new leader in charge of the department, trying to figure out what's important, what areas do I need to focus on. I think this gives a pretty clear roadmap, especially as it relates to employee expectations, but also aligning with city leadership to make certain that we're not missing any of the important pieces. So, I guess in terms of closing thoughts on this particular study, it's not about fixing problems necessarily, there are some issues that need to be addressed, but again, the survey results were relatively positive. But it's about modernizing. It's about putting it in a position where you're addressing the modern workforce, but also looking at some technological solutions to help resolve some of these issues that have plagued the department historically. So, I want to pause here before I jump into the planning and development, because I went kind of rapid pace here.
Questions for Patrick regarding DPW? Alder Belder?
Thank you. I appreciate this report. It was insightful. A couple of things that weren't included in here that I kind of found puzzling is that we recently were made aware that there is a lack of training, standard operating procedures, policies across all departments. And so much so that it's affected people's work plans, and they've had to radically adjust their work plans, because this has become such a high priority. And I have heard within the DPW department, you know, this, you know, they're not void of having this issue. So, there's no mention of this at all in this, that this is of great concern. And it is of great concern to me if there aren't policies, training, and standard operating procedures put in place based on the variety of equipment, chemicals, the workload that these people do, the variety, every day is different, they're handling different things, they're coming across different things. I think it would be incredibly important, and I'm just kind of confused as to why this wasn't included in this report.
Okay. City Administrator?
Yes. So from administration, we're addressing that more directly with each department. So, we're working through, I believe, about a month ago, we sent out a template for standard operating procedures, start building that. One of the key things that are going to be a byproduct of that is updating that with the job descriptions, to make sure that job descriptions are matching and we're aligning training with that. So, that is being addressed actively, but it's being done separate from this. There's elements and components of what we're handling on the standard operating procedures, the safety plans, all of that that are being addressed. So, for like the safety plan, updating that, making sure that that's current, we've brought in CivMec, they've partnered, and they're actually working through that now with DPW. And then HR is actually handling that and creating that program for the city and coordinating all the departments together. So, each one's being kind of addressed in a different manner, but they're all moving forward. And like one of the, one of the things Patrick pointed out, as we were going through this, as some issues popped up, the things that we were able to address right away were addressed immediately. So, some of the things that we noticed was, we had some folks in different leadership positions that may not necessarily had current training or training on modern management, things like that. So, I think last fall, we enrolled all of our department heads and managers into either perfecting leaders or, what was the other program?
Emerging.
Emerging leaders. So, you know, if they're newer leaders or more senior leaders, they're all enrolled in a certificate program through our insurance company that's all free. So that started last fall. We've got all our department heads, managers are all going through that as we speak.
Can we as council get an periodic update of where we're at across the board with all departments as far as this initiative goes?
Yep, absolutely. That's what we incorporated into the work plan.
Okay.
So, yeah, we haven't, we haven't created that metric yet, but we're working on that. So the plans are out. So as that stuff starts coming in, then we'll build that back into our work plan that you guys all have access to.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Alder Belder?
My second thing is, you make a compelling argument for an assistant engineer position, but yet you just state, "We're not hiring anybody, we're not doing anything, we don't have the metrics," but yet you apparently had some metrics, you had, you made a compelling client or argument for it. And then I went through and I looked at the immediate priorities, near-term priorities, long-term goals, it's not in there anywhere. And so I'm just kind of wondering why it was even mentioned if we're not doing anything.
I can take that one too, sorry. That's actually Engineer Jump, Kevin Jump, that's his old position, refilling that. So it's an existing position that...
So is it going to be filled?
Yes.
Or is it not going to be filled?
It's going to be filled in the structure, it's in there, it's just shown as vacant.
Yeah. Okay.
It's just repurposing an existing position.
Okay. Thank you. Aldo Perla?
So, thank you very much for presenting to us. That was very good. Also appreciated the report. I have to say that, first of all, I was very positively surprised to see that, in fact, employees are pretty satisfied with some of the aspect of their work environment, right? I was very positively surprised by the fact that they feel that, first of all, there is a great collaboration with the teams, and they feel rewarded, they feel supported, they feel well-equipped. I don't have the numbers on that, but for team collaboration and for supervisor accessibility and support, good numbers. I'm very happy about that. And I'm also happy that we are going to switch and try to modernize, to provide as much as possible training, coaching, mentoring, path, career paths, these are all extremely important for the workforce. So I'm glad that we go that direction, and I would definitely support that. Just in conclusion, so the, how many new, I know it would not be now, it would be perhaps in 2026, but how many new positions are you suggesting? I counted three. Or you recommended, or you think that would be, would be useful to have?
Yeah. I'm not recommending any new positions right now. Any adjustments in the department are changes to existing roles, so redefining and retitling that I, as we looked at this, you know, one of the things that we had initially looked at is, do we do some external benchmarking against common communities? And what we found is because of the disparity in the job descriptions and job titles, that it would be all but impossible. So that's when we pivoted to, let's work on those hierarchies, we can get employees in the right role, so we can do an appropriate comparison perhaps in the future of who has what. But in terms of the actual new bodies, that I believe there was a request for five or six bodies in, as part of a budget resolution last year. And we, again, we said, let's figure out where everyone belongs. And the analogy I used during the study is, you know, when I was growing up and I was learning to play cards, you know, I'd always complain about the cards I had, and my grandpa would say, "Learn to play with the cards you have before I give you new ones." I think the same thing here is, let's figure out what we have. Let's get the right job titles, right roles, right hierarchy, then we can start making assessments on what positions are needed where. It's not a matter of saying it's not needed, it's we need better information to tell you exactly what's needed.
Very good. Thank you so much.
City Administrator?
Yes. I just wanted to say thank you to Patrick, to all of our leadership at DPW, and to the employees at DPW. I know we kind of, you know, last June or July, we started this, and we're kind of seeing the finished work product here. Throughout the course of that time, we've had numerous meetings, staff has spent a lot of hours, whether it's meeting one-on-one with Patrick, going through their job, leadership, going through the survey results, pivoting how we're producing the report to make sure that we're addressing concerns that are in here. We had about 80% participation rate.
It was closer to 60% in the survey.
60?
But I was still impressed, based on what I had heard from feedback on the possibility of a survey even getting two participants, I was thrilled to get 50, almost 60%.
Yeah, we were way over what we expected. So, you know, we really appreciate the time, and I think we've got a good product that hits kind of what our priorities were going into it. You know, we talked through with the Personnel Committee on kind of what our goal was to find kind of career paths and kind of build that structure in, and then obviously better define leadership's role. And I think the report really hits on that. And I think, you know, the feedback we've got from DPW administration and kind of shaping this throughout seems pretty positive. So, and the overall staff feedback has been very positive from what I've heard. So, I appreciate everyone's participation and all the hard work that they've put into this.
Thanks, Ken. Patrick, second half?
Second half, this one will be shorter, it was a much more compact review. It started, I think initially it started as a, let's take a look at our department overall, the Planning and Development Department. There was a question of an existing position, do we fill it as a manager, as a deputy director, unless, and there was not a consensus, and so let's dig in a little bit more deeply. That fell apart, you know, with the departure of your prior director, but then later in the year, I got the call in terms of, we have some questions in terms of how our CDBG, I'm going to get that wrong every time I say, because I always say CBGB, because I'm a metalhead heart. But, so when you look at this, it was originally, but we did bring in some broader department aspects, we did interviews, there was no survey of employees, it wasn't the intent of this process, but we did some extensive interviews of city leadership, and as well as several members of the department. And so again, well, it wasn't a full audit, it wasn't a review, a high-level review of certain areas. And some of the areas that we identified as challenges in terms of looking at is, you know, the leadership turnover of recent years certainly has affected the department. You know, and as you look at the city's website, or you look at its strategic plans, you know, growth is a major initiative within the city, and this department is probably one of the linchpins for that happening. And so, you know, the sincere need and desire to get some stability in that department and get that department... a high-level review of certain areas. And some of the areas that we identified as challenges in terms of looking at is, you know, the leadership turnover of recent years certainly has affected the department, you know. And as you look at the city's website, or you look at its strategic plans, you know, growth is a major initiative within the city, and this department is probably one of the linchpins for that happening. And so, you know, the sincere need and desire to get some stability in that department and get that department moving forward is essential. But what we also found is that there were gaps in accountability. And so when I use the term ownership, you know, it's not, we need to create more supervisors, but we need to create people who are accountable for the various pieces of work that come out of that department. Whether it be the Community Development Block Grant, or as we kind of talk through the recommendations, you know, the administrative functions, all of the data and paperwork that goes through that department, which is a lot, or the inspections function, you know, ensuring consistency and communication. And then when you talk about, you know, the question we received before about protocols, making sure that we have some internal protocols in terms of standards for the various functions that occur. And when you don't have ownership for that, you have inefficiencies. You know, you don't have the ability to easily and clearly train new staff as they come on board. And that was one of the observations when I started doing the interviews, is that you had two new employees, or relatively new employees, who were training themselves due to the lack of the turnover in leadership roles, and the concentration of knowledge at the top position in the department. And so again, you know, it's not a matter of leaders abdicating their responsibilities, but making certain that you have ownership throughout the department in the various areas, so you can survive those turnover situations. Because those will happen. As good of employers you try to be, and as a nice community as this is, people will still turnover from time to time, and you want to be able, again, not to have those huge chasms in knowledge that really hamper department. As it relates to the Community Development Block Grant Program, you know, I think one of the things that became apparent, and something that I think Casey has rolled up his sleeves intensively over the last several months, and staff, I just want to put on, is to come up with a more of a strategic deployment of that program, and not, I think I'm using your words, the shotgun approach of, let's just see what comes at us, and instead of being reactive, actually using it as a proactive development program as it was intended to be. I think the same thing with planning and zoning, as we had the opportunity to meet with staff and talk with some of the key stakeholders, is if you have growth out there as one of the city's main objectives, are you fostering growth, or are you a barrier to growth? And again, that mindset that I think is pervasive is that there's a little bit of feeling like there's a barrier to that, and we want to make certain that that's being tackled where you are open inviting, whether it is to the housing development that's going to be so critical to your growth goals, or the industrial or commercial growth as well. Needing to work on your zoning code, and again, having somebody accountable and responsible for the zoning code, you know, so it doesn't languish and continue to not make progress. And so again, when we talk about the staffing recommended changes here, we're trying to do so in the confines of the existing headcount or budget allocation, knowing full well at some point in the future that that might need to be addressed in a different context. But getting the permitting inspections and interdepartmental collaboration, because again, when you start talking about things like growth, it's not just a Planning and Development Department, you know, it deals with city administration, and public works, and law enforcement, and fire, and you can keep going down that list, and making certain that those connections and relationships are fostered in order to pull off those programs successfully. And I think it's important just to note that this is a department that, for lack of a better approach, is always going to have some degree of controversy that's associated with it. Just as we're sitting here listening this evening in terms of the two opposing views on the issues that you have in front of you, that usually one of your departments that gets thrown right in the middle of this is your Planning and Development Departments. And so we're not saying that, you know, if we fix these issues, you won't have controversy, because these issues inherently are controversial, and there should be some discussion and debate on them. Why does this matter? We already talked about the big goals you have, and we also want to be a proactive driver of development, not just a regulatory body. And again, that was something that was very clear in the conversations we had with the leadership and the staff, again, to make it a more proactive. And so, what's being done to fix it? You know, you're in active processes, I understand it, to hire a director. I wish you all the best, and I hope it goes swimmingly, because I do believe, you know, as much as we talk about addressing issues, I think you have a fantastic opportunity. So I hope whoever is a candidate for this role is watching right now, because I do believe it to be a fantastic opportunity to shape and mold a department that truly is looking to improve its reputation and its standing in the community, and shape and morph itself to be prepared for the future. So again, you know, we could talk about the negative aspects, but also look at the opportunities that come out of those aspects being very helpful. So in terms of those roles, you know, that despite having two positions that were, had the title planner in their job, that there was very little planning activity that was coming from the department, either through a misalignment of duties, or stepping in to pitch in because of the staffing shortages, you know, that, you know, people who were hired and never working on a planning activity because they had to fill in for other duties that were necessary. So recommitting yourself and repurposing a job to the position of planner, and beginning that recruitment to something that is being put in place, and then also taking one of the building inspectors and having them as a chief building inspector, so you do have that coordination of roles, and the coordination of expectations and protocols and those sorts of things. And again, taking one of the administrative staff and having them as the administrative coordinator, working alongside their coworkers, but coordinating the flow of paperwork and documents that is just so voluminous with the department, like a Planning and Development Department. So those are the staffing changes that we immediately talk about. I think the second to last section of my report talks about the future possibility of resurrecting that Planning and Zoning Manager, or Deputy Director, or whatever that role might be, that again, I think the same situation as Public Works lies here. Let's figure out what you need, let's get somebody on board, and if that is a true need in the future, especially as the city revs up its growth engine, it can always be revisited, but trying to introduce that right now, I think would be incredibly confusing and overwhelming to, you know, whether it's a leadership aspect or to the rest of the staff, because you're going to be bringing somebody in, and this gives them a blank slate on which they can grow from. We talked about updating the zoning codes. I understand that's in process, and also as well as improving the permitting and inspections work. And then, again, with the hiring of a new director and the building of those relationships, you know, is also going to be a necessary task. And again, based on my interactions with the city, I have no doubt that that will be taken care of. I think one of the other things I note in my report is, you know, this is one of those departments that, as of right now, you are leaning pretty heavily on some outside experts to help navigate some of your programs. It's probably going to be necessary for a while, as people get the skills, and as you still adapt to some of the changing staff members. But, you know, I think, you know, the ultimate goal with any department, to the extent possible, is that you want to have, you know, your consultants, keep us in work, we like the work, but at the same time, they should support, not replace, the existing staff that you have. It should help fill niches, as opposed to just being a stopgap measure just to operate your department. I think that's everybody's dream, now let's just get that to be a reality. And so if I look at this, and I do, and I'm very confident about this, is that it's not a crisis, but a transition. You know, I do believe this is an opportunity for someone to come in and shape their own team, shape the own direction, and again, have a city who's got very ambitious growth goals, and so finding that right person is going to be a key factor in all of this, and shifting from reactive to proactive. I think that's a key change that is going to be need for the department, for it to regain its standing. And then if I look at this from the city council standpoint, that, you know, if the question is, you know, how can we support, is just making certain that the structure and resources are tended to. You know, that, you know, again, if the goal is growth, and I don't want to put that as your only goal, because you also have resource preservation and other concerns that are incredibly important, but that there will be some structural changes that will be needed likely as someone else comes on. So I look at this as an opportunity for the city. I hope you view it the same way as we continue to navigate these challenges. Cool. Thanks, Patrick. Questions for Patrick? Alder Bellinger?
Thank you. I have a great deal of sympathy and compassion for these people that are in this department. They haven't had a lot of direction or leadership, even when there was a director there, they were training on their own and thrown into the deep end and had to either sink or swim. And I deal, I'm on the Plan Commission, I deal with that department frequently, and I can tell you, when I was first appointed last April to the Plan Commission, things didn't work as smoothly as they probably should have back then. But I will tell you that in dealing with Elise specifically, because she's the one that is on the Plan Commission, she has come a tremendous way. She's a lot more confident. She is an asset to that department, and she does a very, very good job. And it's amazing to see the growth in this past year with her. So I support, you know, giving these individuals the tools and the leadership that they need and deserve. And I'm just kind of wondering, how many positions are open right now in that department, and for how long have they been?
I'm going to step away from that completely. I- City Administrator?
Yep. So the zoning administrator position, we're going to look at converting an existing staff. Same with the office coordinator and lead building inspector are currently on staff. So those are basically positions that we would look at transitioning. We do have, right now, we have two vacancies. Obviously, the director position is vacant, and then our community development planner position is vacant. So this is a good opportunity for us. You know, we have planning and development, and we have really, we have a couple different staff that have job descriptions that describe planning activities, but know what planning activities are really taking place, and focusing a planner position, and repurposing that with the impetus of performing planning duties and recreating the job description. This again, as Patrick kind of alluded to, this process was a little bit different, obviously a much different situation than what DPW had. In this case, you'll note in the, kind of the report, we actually had staff do a time study, because there was such a disconnect from what their job description said they did to what they were actually doing. You know, I know, you kind of brought up Elise and what she was doing. Her job was associate planner, and she was basically doing all the administrative work on the zoning end of things. And basically, our main point of contact for redoing the zoning code, things like that, and working with folks, but that's not in her job description. So that's why we kind of had to take a different approach here to help understand, you know, where that workload is actually distributed. And then, you know, Patrick in interviewing with staff and understanding their position on what they thought was more manageable and a better breakdown of workload, kind of putting that back together and what it would look structurally. And that's what you have before you now.
Thank you.
Yes. Alder Ramey?
Thank you, Mayor. More of a comment than a question. We've, yeah, been through a lot of transition and a lot of change in the last few years, that's for sure. I know there's always, well, I hear often the word transparency thrown around a lot, especially when it comes to administration and the city. And so I just want to take a moment to say that I'm incredibly hopeful and excited about our leadership, Administrator Bradley and Mayor Ryan Sorensen, for embracing that transparency. And it's very easy, it could be very easy to take this kind of report, warts and all, and sugarcoat it. And so the fact that we can embrace the changes that we do need, and embrace the opportunities that we do have, and us as council can hold leadership accountable in making these changes, I just feel like there's a lot of hope, and we should just keep moving forward, not looking back. And so just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder Ramey. Any additional questions? All right, Alder Prell?
Yeah, just a question about, basically, the planner position, it existed-
Alder Prell, can you talk into your mic?
Sure, thank you. So the planner position used to exist, right? It doesn't exist right now, correct?
Yes, entitled. And then what actually happened was over, I don't know how many iterations of job descriptions, the planner position actually was handling office supplies through that-
Among other things, but yeah.
Yeah. And so what we, as we started digging in and better understanding, because we had what the old director, the direction they wanted to take the department, and we were working through that when they were here. And then it kind of got to a point that, you know, we need to have an evaluation that's independent to better understand alignment. And that's when Patrick came in, and there was a change or a vacation of that position shortly thereafter, we were able to really kind of dig in and understand that job description alignment with duties and functions of the department were completely misaligned. And, you know, it goes back to this particular department, the staff, you know, you've got some staff that have been here 30-plus years, they've been through a lot. They really love their jobs, they enjoy what they do, they're working together, kind of in their independent groups. They do a great job, you know, getting them more collaborative as a team is one of the goals and outcomes that we're shooting for here. But we've got a great group, they were tremendous in helping give this feedback, so Patrick could kind of put that bigger picture together for us, and take their feedback in the one-on-one interviews, and, you know, the kind of documenting what they're doing on a day-to-day basis really helped to kind of build this plan. So we've got this bigger picture on the administrative side to understand what they kind of need from us to help them be more successful.
Thank you, City.
I'm very glad that we have been, have done this assessment. So I really applaud the effort and the initiative on that. And I also want to add that all my interactions with these departments have been extremely positive. So with all the overload and all the, you know, filling in for other positions, they have been very effective in all the interactions I've had.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to do this. I mean, I just want to say to someone, I mentioned this before, that my interactions with the staff, with the exception of a small, small, small percentage, were just people let me do my job. I just want to do my work and do it right, and be recognized for it. And so I think you've got a good crew of people here. It's just giving them the environment where they can flourish. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
All right. From now on, we have a hearing, number 172425 pursuant to a notice published in letter sent by the city clerk. This hearing is to allow interested parties to hear related to a proposal amendment of the city of Sheboygan's official zoning map. The purpose of this amendment is to change the youth district classification of the property located at North 15th Street and Martin Avenue, at the aforementioned parcel numbers. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item? Anyone wishing to be heard? Final call? Anyone wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Alder Decker?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to close the hearing.
Safer.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of closing the hearing, state aye?
Aye.
Any objections? That hearing is closed. Item nine, hearing number 182425 pursuant to notice published, this hearing is for the purpose of allowing interested parties to be heard relative to the proposed PUDGDP designation for the property located at North 15th Street and Martin Avenue. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item? Anyone wishing to be heard? Final call? Anyone wishing to be heard? Alder Decker? Thank you, Mayor. I move to close the hearing.
Safer.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of closing the hearing, state aye?
Aye.
Any objections? The hearing is closed. Next is the consent agenda, items 15 through, 11 through 15. Alder Decker? Thank you, Mayor. I move to receive and file all ROs, receive all RCs, and adopt all resolutions and ordinances.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Alder Bellinger?
I was going to move to move up item 35 to the top of the agenda and deal with that.
Let's handle the consent agenda first, and then we'll do that.
Thank you.
Anything on the consent agenda?
No, nothing on the consent agenda.
All right. Seeing nothing on the consent agenda? This is a roll call though. That's approved. All right, moving ahead. Item 35, RC number 2322425 by Public Works Committee, to whom was referred, resolution number 1562425 by Alders, Decker, and Ramey, approving the Evergreen Park Trail Assessment and Trail-
and Trail Improvement Concept Plan. Alder Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to receive the RC and adopt the substitute resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on this item? Alder Heidemann.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to take this item and then readdress the item after the election. It's very unfortunate.
Alder Heidemann, can you make your motion first?
Make a motion to take this item until the new council is elected.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Alder Heidemann?
Okay. It's very unfortunate that that district has not been represented. Now, and the council representative isn't here tonight. I mean, this is a very critical vote for her area, no doubt about it. Now, I've seen two meetings on this, and I think we're doing a great job. I really do. In fact, I was really impressed with Alderman Ramey's spin around, and where she went for the pledge of allegiance, it was just unbelievable. If you get a chance to see that, that's quite amazing. But, all kidding aside, this resolution should not be adopted without the representation of that area. I think it's poor government. I would not want it done if I wasn't, if I wasn't going to be available. Again, it's time-consuming for all these people to come back again after, what, in a month and a half or so? But I think we would be doing our due diligence not only to us as a group, but also to the citizens of Sheboygan. So I would much appreciate that we can move this item till after the election.
All right. Thank you, Alder Heidemann. Alder Rust.
I'm going to have to disagree with Alder Heidemann because with that reasoning, we shouldn't approve any of these items without Alder One being here until the next council session. So I'm going to have to disagree, and I'm going to vote no on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder LaFave.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that there's like three different blocks of property here. You have the Maywood, you have Evergreen, and you have the area around the quarry. I would, before we, you know, really get into the teeth of this thing, I would like a lot more environmental studies done so that we can find out exactly what's going to happen with screwing around with man nature, you know?
All right. Thanks, Alder LaFave. Any other comments on tabling? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. City clerk? And the motion is to table until the next council.
Alder Person Bellinger.
Vote aye.
Alder Person Decker.
Nay.
Alder Person Heidemann.
Aye.
Alder Person LaFave.
Aye.
Alder Person Mitchell.
Aye.
Alder Person Parella.
Nay.
Alder Person Peterson.
Aye.
Alder Person Ramey.
Nay.
Alder Person Rust.
Nay.
Five ayes, four noes.
All right, the motion is approved, that'll be tabled until the next council. All right, now, back to the agenda here. All right, under Reports of Officers, items 16 through 18 will be referred to their respective committees. Under Resolutions, we have item 19, Resolution Number 1782425 by Alders, Bellinger, and Prella approving the general development plan and specific implementation plan by Jake Buswell for construction of Jacob Hall Apartments on the aforementioned parcel numbers within planned unit development PDU zone. Alder Bellinger.
I move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote.
City Clerk.
All right.
Thank you. City Administrator, real quick comment. Just wanted to give an update in probably our next council meeting. I think we're going to attempt to do a direct referral, but based on the feedback at the Plan Commission, there was general consensus of the neighbors that this be renamed to the Ludkey Apartments.
Ludkey.
Ludkey Apartments, rather than Jacob Hall Apartments. So the developer, Jake, is here, and...
He loves coming up here.
He agreed, he agreed with that and has already done the name change, so we're going to be doing an addendum. So while you're voting on it as Jacob Hall tonight, that'll be converted to Ludkey Apartments, LLC going forward, so there'll be an addendum that'll be approved by council or asked for approval by council, but that is a direct response to the feedback from the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Jake, I commend you for doing that, thank you for listening to the...
Neighbors, it was, it is kind of an iconic name in the neighborhood, so thank you for doing that.
All right. Next item, 20, Resolution Number 1802425 by Alders, Mitchell, and Prella, authorizing the purchase of parcel number 59281106107 located adjacent to Ontario Avenue in the Sheboygan Area School District for the future use by the city. Alder Mitchell.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to suspend the rules.
Any objection? Seeing none, please proceed with your motion.
I move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Moved and seconded. And then, city administrator, would you like to give a quick comment on why we're suspending the rules in a brief overview?
Yes, this is something that we've been working on with the school district. This is in conjunction with the purchase of the Sheboygan Inn that we did earlier this year with, with kind of the transition of leadership at the school district. We were working with, on the, with the former school superintendent, and then they wanted to wait until this time of year to try working out the sale. As you'll see, there's a purchase agreement in there. That's essentially the assessed value of the property that they'll be transferring to us to be used as part of that development as well. And I did want to call your attention, there is one caveat in there. During the life of the TID, they're going to have us, or for 20 years at least, have us providing a 10 parking stalls, and that'll be on the public parking lot that is near or behind the Wile Center, just north of the school. That is a city-owned lot. I have talked with our transit director, and he is comfortable with that. It actually mirrors the agreement that we have for Central School District where we provide parking lot access to the school there. We just have some signs up for school parking only, and then they take care of it beyond that. So if there's any other questions, please let me know.
Thank you, city administrator. Alder Bellinger.
No, I just wanted to find out why we were suspending the rules, so the public would be informed on that.
All right.
That's been addressed, so thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Item 20, that is approved. Items 21 through 32 will be referred to their respective committees. Now, reports of committees. Item 33, RC number 2312425 by Public Works Committee, to whom was referred Resolution Number 1692425 by Alders, Decker, and Ramey vacating and discontinuing portions of North Commerce Street, and that will lay over. Item 34, RC number 2282425 by Finance and Personnel Committee, to whom was referred Resolution Number 1682425 by Alders, Mitchell, and Parella, authorizing the appropriate city officials to sign the amendment to leverance size parking lot lease. Alder Mitchell.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to receive the RC and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on this item? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. It's approved. Item 36, RC number 2332425 by the Licensing Hearing and Public Safety Committee, to whom was referred Resolution Number 1652425 by Alders, Rust, and LaFave, authorizing acceptance of the 2025 Wisconsin Bureau of Transportation Safety and Bicycle and Pedestrian Enforcement Grant and establishing appropriate appropriation in the 2025 budget for grant funds received. Alder Rust.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to receive the RC and adopt the substitute resolution.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on this item?
Seeing none. Second?
Yeah. Oh, I didn't know if you buzzed in yet. Oh, okay. Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. That is approved. Item 37, RC number 2352425 by the Licensing Hearing and Public Safety Committee, to whom was referred RO number 1172425 by the city clerk submitting a liquor license application. Alder Rust.
I move to receive the RC and deny the license.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on this item? Alder Bellinger.
Could I please get some background information from whoever would be in the know as to why we are doing this? And it states here that there's a large number of parties interested in obtaining liquor. What's a large number of parties? How many is that? Who are they? Is there ulterior plans to give this license to one of those? Or is this going out for bit? I mean, how is this going to be handled with a large number and denying this one? Is it going to be a lottery? What's going to happen here?
City Attorney?
So the process that the licensing committee uses when they have applications for new licenses is to have everyone who is signed up on the list of interested parties to come present to the Licensing Hearing and Public Safety Committee. And then from those, there is an offer made to, depending on how many licenses are available, assuming there's typically one, for one applicant to then apply for the license. Meredith probably knows how many people are on that waiting list.
I'd say it's 20 or more right now.
Yeah. And one of the issues, apparently, I wasn't at the committee meeting, but I think I understand what the members of the committee were concerned about. So typically, you do have a, when you have a license, you can't just transfer that license to another party. It does, it really is a new license. There is a process by which someone can turn in their license contingent on it going to a particular party, and that was the process that was used here. However, in this particular case, in addition to the transfer of the license, the license would also have to be moved to another location. And so from reviewing the minutes of the committee, it appears that part of the concern here was that, given that process, given that this is a little bit different than just somebody taking over the current premises, that it really was fair to that, those 20 people who are on the waiting list, that everyone should have an opportunity to apply for this license.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you saying that.
All right, so we have Alder Prella, Heidemann, then LaFave. Alder Prella.
I just wanted to add, as a member of the committee, that that's correct. So that is a good summary of the concerns that the committee had. The fact that the transfer would be a transfer of location from two very different places, and also a concern about not creating a precedent for something that we believe that everybody should have, everybody who is hoping and waiting for that opportunity should have equal chances to access, to access a license, as it was explained.
Thank you. Alder Heidemann?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, being at the meeting, the situation, previously, we had transferred a license to another property, another business, but that business was right next door. I mean, it wasn't like they were going halfway across town. So the people that want this license can surely come to the committee, and we could possibly give it to them, but there's too many other people that are in the city of Sheboygan that deserve an opportunity to get a license, and again, just transferring it from one order to another order across town, I don't think that's a sound thing to do, so we voted against it.
Thank you, Alder Heidemann. Alder LaFave.
Yes, and we also said that there was kind of a preference, you know, and be quite correct, it was almost all the way across the city to another location. But that person or that entity that would want to apply for that license has every opportunity, just like everyone else, to apply for that license and make their case, and then the committee would make their decision at that time. But it would be open for more people, which would be fair.
Thank you, Alder LaFave. Seeing no more discussion, this is a roll call vote. That's approved. All right, matter is laid over. RO number 1152425 by the city Plan Commission, to whom was referred General Ordinance Number 372425 by Alder Bellinger, and RO number 1062425 by city clerk submitting an application to amend the city of Sheboygan official zoning map of the Sheboygan zoning ordinance to change the youth district classification of property located at ni, excuse me, at North 15th Street and Martin Avenue at the aforementioned parcel numbers from class urban residential UR 12 to urban residential UR 12 with the PUD overlay classification. Alder Bellinger.
I recommend, recommend filing the RO and adopting the ordinance.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. Alder, Administrator Bradley.
Just back to what we mentioned earlier, the name will be updated for this application. So you're voting on it as one way, and next time you see it, it'll be a different name. So just want to make sure everybody's aware of that.
Thank you for those comments. Roll call vote. All right. Very productive meeting. Alder Decker, what is your pleasure?
I move to adjourn.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of adjournment, state aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned at 7:47.